Good afternoon. It's a pleasure to welcome all of you to our February 22nd to 2024 briefing. This is our second briefing for the regular meeting next Thursday, which is not next Thursday, it's in two weeks because we're not meeting on the 5th Thursday. So we will not be meeting on February 29th, but we will be, our meeting is on March 7th, 2024, so we have, this is our second briefing for that. Before we get to the review of the agenda, we actually have two discussion items and one, first one, we'd like to introduce and welcome Mayor Rick McCraw from the City of King, appreciate him being here. And it's a real pleasure to see the Mayor Pro Tem Jane Cole, who spent a number of years right down at the end of this table.
Yay Jane!
Jane, we're glad to see you. That's good. So Mayor, you're welcome to come up and tell us a little bit about what you're up to in the City of King. He told me he just started live streaming meetings, so this is live stream, so you gotta, gotta be on.
I gotta be careful what I say.
Gotta be careful what you say.
Well, it is a pleasure to come up here and get to meet you. I said when I got to be Mayor, I warned them, I said whoever's gonna be my Mayor Pro Tem, I'm gonna try to do some things that we've never done before. And one of them was to go around to the different municipalities around us. And so luckily Jane Cole became our Mayor Pro Tem, and I'm just tickled pink over that. And I know, you all know her history, and you know what a great lady that she is. And so we've been to Tobaccoville where Mr. Martin's from, and we've been to, we're gonna go to Pilot Mountain, but we went over to the Swearing Inn and Walnut Cove, and we went to Swearing Inn and Danbury to meet some of the different people. We've got three mayors in the whole Stokes County, and so we had all three at a couple of those meetings, and both of those mayors are ladies. So I told somebody the other day, I said, well, you know, if something happens to me, we've got a good mayor coming up. But again, thank you so much for letting me come up and speak to you. I told Mr. Martin that I wanted to go around and meet people, let them know that we're your neighbor, and if anything we can do to help you, or I may call upon you guys to help me. I saw Mr. Linnville at the opening of the new highway down here, and then opened up the new building over here, so got a lot of things going on here, and King is really growing. So the new Beltway is bringing a lot of traffic up our way. We're projected to have 1,500 new houses getting started, we've got about 900 going right now. So if you ride up there, King is not just a little small town anymore. So thanks again for letting me speak, and I appreciate it.
My name is Dave Plyler, and I'd appreciate your vote the next time I run. I'd like to thank you with a poem that I learned, it's all about the ocean, the Atlantic Ocean, down near Wilmington, as they call it down in Wilmington, is that all right with you?
Yes, sir.
You can remember this. The boy stood on the burning deck, eating oysters by the peg. His mother called, he would not go, because he loved those oysters so. Thank you very much, Dave.
I was telling the reporter when I ran unopposed for Mayor, I was in council eight years, I ran for Mayor, and there's a wild peacock that runs around King, and they named him Joe the Peacock. Okay? So somebody put a sign up there, write in vote, Joe the Peacock for Mayor. Well, I'm gonna inform you that Joe the Peacock did come in second. He got nine votes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Speaker. Mayor, you're welcome back.
Thank all of you for being here.
Anytime. Our second presentation today is actually an update from Imprints Cares, and we're gonna have Kelsey Camarena and Claudia Barrett speak to us some, and I see Claudia's coming first, so welcome.
Thank you for having me. Chairman Martin, Vice Chairwoman Wissin Hunt, yes, please. I'm sorry, jump in the back.
And don't forget Dave Plyler, friend of the poor. I am the poor. For those in the audience wanting to know who the technician is with the microphone, that is our clerk, and she's probably the best clerk we've ever had. Her first name is Ashley. Let's see if she fixed it.
She did, I believe so.
Very good.
She fixes everything.
Yeah. Okay, let's start over. Chairman Martin, Vice Chairwoman Wissin Hunt, and County Commissioners, I'm here today representing Imprints Cares. And for our Board of Directors, our leadership, our staff, and the families we serve, we just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for approving ARPA funds for Imprints Cares. I'd also like to acknowledge the county ARPA staff who have been so instrumental in supporting us and helping us navigate this amazing funding opportunity for our organization. Before I get into specifics, I'd like to also acknowledge and thank Commissioner Plyler and County Manager Watts for your years of dedication and commitment to this community.
Thank you.
Of course. So on this slide, you will see the impact that Imprints Cares has had in the community in our last fiscal year, and this could not have been possible without ARPA funding. We were able to serve over 11,000 children, distribute over 19,000 books into the homes of families. And another great thing about, that I think that we do really well, is community partnerships. We made over 960 referrals to partnering community agencies for services. But the one program I would really like to highlight for you is our Pediatric Parenting Connections Program. This is a program that's co-located in pediatric offices that serve a high Medicaid population. Through ARPA funding, we were able to expand those services into Novant Health. And so now we are serving families in both Atrium and Novant Health practices. As you can see from the slide, last year, we received over 1,000 referrals from pediatricians. So for those who don't know our program, our parents, teachers, family educators are co-located in pediatric practices. Pediatricians will refer to them if they have concerns with social determinants of health, behavior, or developmental concerns. Our family educators spend time with those families, identifying the resources that they need, connecting them to those resources, and really closing the loop on those referrals, which is a very unique aspect of our program model. So this year so far, we have received over 630 referrals, which is 50% more than where we were last year at this time. So again, just want to acknowledge the benefit that ARPA funding has allowed us to build our capacity and continue to expand our services to families. So when we found out that we had to move out of Augsburg Community Center, which had been our home for 52 years, we were really not quite sure what we were gonna do. And fortunately enough, we were blessed to receive ARPA funding to purchase the old Datamax building off of Coliseum Plaza Court, which is now going to become the Center for Thriving Families. So just this week, we moved out of our Coliseum Plaza Court building, and our contractors will take possession on Monday to begin total renovations of this facility. This is gonna allow us to double our programming for our special needs program and our inclusion program. The majority of our staff will be housed in this center. It is gonna be a community center, we will have training rooms for the community, we'll have a demonstration kitchen. But what's really neat about us being located there is that we've partnered with Hubbard Commercial Realty, and we're revitalizing that whole strip mall in front of us to be an education hub. So today Salem Monasori has moved in, Developmental Therapy Associates will be moving in, Key Autism has moved in, and so we're really trying to be strategic about creating an education hub that's centrally located for all of our families in this community. So again, just want to thank you and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
......................................................
Thank you.
Any questions for Claudia?
The only question that I would have is relative to transportation. What transportation options do you provide for the families?
So there are two bus stops right there by Coliseum Plaza Court, so we are on the transit line.
Do you provide passes or anything for the families?
We do, in some cases. We also have mini buses, and so if we need to, we'll go drive around and pick families up.
Sounds great, thank you.
Yes.
I can say I've had a couple of visits out there, and I appreciate the work, I mean, the work that you do is really important, particularly with involving pre-K discussions that we, over about a year, so I appreciate all that you do.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
All righty, we're gonna turn our briefing over to the County Manager to go through the items for the March 7th meeting.
Thank you, Chairman Martin, and good afternoon, Board members and staff and guests. We have a fairly straightforward agenda today. I will say a couple of items will relate to some of the conversation we had this morning in the winter work session, so, you know, a fairly involved morning, diving into a lot of detail, but a few of them will kind of bubble up through this, so I'll go ahead and dive into it. We have several special resolutions. Agenda item one is an ordinance ordering the Forsyth County Community and Economic Development Department to remove or demolish a structure unfit for human habitation and otherwise to effectuate the purpose of the Forsyth County Minimum Housing Code. Kyle Haney, our Community Economic Development Director, will review.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So I think this one is one of those that would relate to the morning session. This is order to effectuate demolition of 4825 Pine Hall Road in Walckertown, North Carolina. So this is one of the first ones that I think we've brought to you in many, many decades. So I wanted to give a little bit of background here. The Commissioners approved an updated minimum housing code back in 2019, focused on health and safety, and a complaint-based inspection system. So our office receives complaints in the community about possible minimum housing code violations, and we go and inspect and follow up. The Commissioners also funded a full-time code enforcement officer to administer the code. Staff's carried out inspections, hearing and orders, and ultimately, we seek voluntary compliance as much as possible. Just a couple statistics, since fiscal year 2021, we've had 217 complaints, 103 violations, and from that voluntarily received 62 repairs, and 10 properties have been demolished because of that. And before I get into specifics to this one, I did want to just recognize Anthony Davis, who is the code enforcement officer for the county, Anthony, if you want to stand back there, who, his job is to go out to these properties and work with, to get compliance. So looking at the specific case, I'm not sure if that map is showing up very well, but the property is located north of the municipal limits of Walckertown on Pine Hall Road. There's a little star there, you can see it at the corner of Judge Clement Road and Pine Hall Road, a little bit closer. This property, there have been a number of complaints received, in fact, I was looking back through the records, I know there was a petition signed by 100 residents back in 2018 complaining about the state of this property. For this case purposes, our first inspection for this case file was back in May of 2021. We've had several subsequent inspections of the property, and there's some pictures in the slides here, but there are several apparent conditions that are in violation of the minimum housing code. So the structural conditions of the roof and property, there's no safe means of egress, no connection to electrical or heating systems, as well as excessive trash and garbage on the property. I'll go through a couple of pictures here. So you can see from the outside of the property, it has, it's been abandoned for quite some time, there is trash accumulating outside, the roof has collapsed. The residents have actually moved some of the property to the entrances of the section to try to keep people out from coming there and dumping. I know Minor Barnett's office has also been very involved in this property for a significant amount of time now as well. And then this is about as much, as far as you can get inside the building, because the roof has collapsed in the building. So once we've done the inspections, we got into the process of notifying the interested parties. So the property owner of record has been deceased for quite some time, so we worked closely with the Attorney's Office to identify all interested parties and follow the notification process, and that is one of the big delays, and you saw when we first inspected this, but getting, trying to figure out all of the interested parties and give them the notification they were required. So we held a first hearing on June 6, 2023, noticed all parties except for George S. Redd, and I'll address that in just a second here, via certified mail and publication, let's see, on Journal, no interested parties attended the hearing, and a determination was made that the property was unfit for human habitation, and that the repairs required to bring the property to code exceeded 60% of the structure's value of $4,800. In the circumstance where it exceeds 60% per the board's policy, we issued an order to demolish to all of the interested parties that were identified by certified mail, as well as publication. The order gave them 90 days to complete the demolition, or notify the county that they intend to demolish the property and request an extension, and we filed a notice of its pendence on September 19th to ensure that anyone who was interested in the party would know of that order. So like I said, the title work was a little bit difficult, and I'm just gonna go ahead and say, George Redd is a name that some people may know. This is not George Redd, the Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity, it actually is his father, and he was involved because he had bought a different piece of property from the air, so he's had nothing to do with this property, but we did go ahead and notify him just to make sure that we were in compliance, held another hearing, and issued that order to demolish on November 7, 2023 via certified mail, to make sure that we were in compliance with state statute on the process. So went back out a couple of weeks ago, just to take some updated photos. The property has not been cleared or demolished, you can see there's some additional trash that's been dumped there, and once again, here are the conditions of the inside of the property. So the structure's not been demolished after the 90-day period, and no communication of intent to demolish, no organizations involved in providing or restoring dwellings for affordable housing have requested notification. Ordinance provides staff authority to demolish and remove structures in the property. So the ordinance before you would authorize staff to engage a contractor to demolish this property, and any expenses for the removal or demolition would be filed as a lien against the property, and that would have the same priority and be collected in the same manner as a lien for a special assessment. So if approved, staff would then, there's some required testing as far as identifying any asbestos on the property, we would bid the demolition and clearance of the structure, and then once that is done, place a lien on the property for the expenses incurred. I will say we have $40,000 in the budget for demolitions, this will be the first time that we use those funds.
With all of the list there, you got here, nobody claims ownership.
No, sir.
Well, then, I suppose with the lien you're talking about, put against it, then the county will end up owning the property. What's the estimated cost on cleaning it up?
So we don't have a good estimate on that, just because we have not done one of these. I did speak with General Services, we've done a demolition on the C-Mex property, but that was a large industrial property and was fairly expensive. The city does do demolitions on properties, and I think it averages about 20,000, somewhere around there, so we're not sure. I think we'll go out and obviously bid this, and hopefully that'll be a good marker, and we can come back to the board and let, you know.
Will we go through a bid process?
Yes, sir.
How much land there is in it?
How much land? I believe there was about, I think it was about nine acres, I'd have to get back to you, I don't wanna, I don't wanna state that. I'd have to get back to you, I don't have that on.
Well, that just appeared to be old dwellings there, right as you get right at the corner. Is there any remnants of an old store building there?
I believe this structure actually used to be a tavern at some point, and it also has some residential purpose before that, and then there was a trailer that was on the property as well, but I'm not sure there was, actually, I think it may have been a country store before it was a tavern.
So I just wanted to be sure that I heard correctly, you've contacted George Redd, right? And he didn't want any...
I spoke with George Redd and his father.
He's okay with this process?
Yes, ma'am.
Fair enough, thank you.
Kyle, I thank you, I know exactly, this process is a long process, and I appreciate what you're doing. While you're here, could you give me an update on the property at 52 and 66? And I say that because it's about a mile from the Stokes County line, and since we have the City, King City officials here who also receive complaints about this property, could you give us an update on that?
I'd be happy to, yeah. 9001 Broad Street is a property that we've been working on for quite some time, and I know it's in very bad condition. We, it is an aired property as well, and so we engaged and did the legal work. There was an attorney who, while we were moving forward, purchased the property, but does not own outright all of the property, so there's some legal proceedings there tying that up. We had issued an order to demolish, but because of the purchase, that's complicated things, so I actually spoke with him yesterday and saw an update, and hopefully we'll hear something today.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Kyle? Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. And I will, I will comment that I know the work around just trying to bring properties into compliance, many of them get in compliance without us taking this step, and it really is a reflection on staff, so appreciate that work. All right, Damon's gonna review a resolution acknowledging a notice from Union Cross Fire Rescue of Forsyth County of its intent to purchase capital property valued at over $10,000 and approving this purchase pursuant to Section 12 of the January 1, 2021 agreement between Forsyth County and Union Cross Fire Rescue of Forsyth County Incorporated. Damon?
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. So this item for your consideration, like the manager said, is approval for the Union Cross Fire and Rescue Department to purchase capital property in excess of $10,000. The county's agreement with Union Cross Volunteer Fire Rescue notes in Section 12 that the department has to provide a written proposal to the Commissioners, and then the Commissioners have to approve any capital purchases in excess of $10,000. Union Cross's fire suppression rolling stock includes a 28-year-old Pierce Pumper Tanker, and they've identified a 2024 to replace that Pumper Tanker. Chief Scott submitted a written request, which you have in your packet, dated January 23, 2024, to make this capital purchase and specify that there are no plans to request an increase in the tax rate for the district, and the purchase will be made within budget. And Chief Scott is here, and I'm also glad to take questions if you have any about.
Any questions for either the Chief or Damon?
We'll get to that next week, Commander Potter, when we get to our, not next week, in two weeks, on the 7th.
Other questions? Thank you.
Agenda item three is a resolution authorizing expansion of the scope of use of funds approved for electrification of the motor pool fleet to include procurement of zero emission electric landscape maintenance equipment and all free utility vehicles. Again, this morning, we had a conversation about the work of the Sustainability Task Force, and mentioned this just in brief, but I'll turn it over to Minor to review it.
Hello again. This item is seeking your consideration to allow us to utilize some of the funding that was approved in the 2022 Pago Capital Project ordinance to support investment in electrification of transportation of our fleet, and to take some of the funding that would have otherwise been used to buy some of the cars, and to go ahead and purchase some electric landscape maintenance equipment because it's readily available, and as I mentioned this morning, it's... mentioned this morning, it's, it's high performance, low cost of operation, and we just think it would make sense to go ahead and consider that with your approval. I would suggest that we wait until we get the bids from the requests for proposals for the electric vehicle charging construction project first, so that before we propose a specific amount to invest in the landscape equipment.
I, I liked your idea this morning of any savings that we may accrue because of using the direct pay from the, I guess, the Recovery Act, American Recovery Act. That would be a great thing to set aside for those kinds of purchases. But I have no problem with using that, that fund, that pool, to, to actually do that because they are, they're very, I, I, as a person that uses, not a whole lot, but a chainsaw, I actually bought an electric one and was, just to try it out, I got a small one. I was in, it was, it's incredible, the performance that it, that it actually has had, and it, how long the charge lasts, and I mean, it was just a, it was really, it's a powerful piece of equipment, and battery technology has far exceeded anything, I guess, I could, I could have imagined. So it's, it's amazing what can be done, and it can be, and like you said, I can operate anywhere close in the city, the sound, et cetera, the length of time that everything runs, it's a, it's a good investment. Not only is it clean, but it's cheaper by far to operate, so.
And in addition to landscape maintenance equipment, like lawnmowers and that kind of stuff, we're also proposing that we include consideration of off-duty utility vehicles to be used at parks to move people and materials around within the parks.
Any other questions for Minor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Minor. All right. Agenda item four are minutes, and those were sent out yesterday, I believe. Yep. So you should have those in your email. I have a couple of budget and finance matters. Item five is a resolution approving a revision to the 2023-2024 Junal Crime Prevention Council Funding Plan. Kyle Wolf, our Budget Management Director, will review.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So back on December 7th, you approved a revised FY24 JCPC funding plan, but the, the narrative of the resolution incorrectly indicated that triad restorative justice would receive $10,100 instead of $10,110. The county attorneys requested this resolution be adopted to show the actual increase of $10,110. So it's really just a.
A question for Kyle.
Thank you, Kyle. Kyle, number six is also his. It's an amendment to the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget ordinance that appropriates fund balance to return a portion of the Medicaid Hold Harmless Funds paid to Forsyth County in fiscal year 2023.
So this, this agenda item is necessary to return a portion of Medicaid Hold Harmless Funds received by the county in FY23 back to the state. And so when the state absorbed the full non-administrative cost of Medicaid from counties back in 2008, the Article 44 sales tax was phased out, which resulted in lower revenue for counties, as well as lower Medicaid costs. There was a hold harmless provision that was included as part of the swap, where the state ensured counties would receive a financial gain of at least $500,000 as a result of that swap. It also provided funding to counties if the revenue the county would have received from the old Article 44 sales tax was greater than the Medicaid costs absorbed by the state. Because sales taxes have been so strong over the last few years, we've, Forsyth County has received some of this Medicaid Hold Harmless money the past couple of years. The state discharges 90% of the projected year-end Hold Harmless payment in March, and for FY23, we received $6,344,94. The actual amount of Hold Harmless the county was eligible to receive was actually less, So this item is necessary to appropriate the, the difference of those, of that amount, and send it back to the state. So it's really just, uh, the state actually comes up with the calculation and sends us, sends us the revenue, and then reconciles it, and so based on the reconciliation, we need to return some money.
Any questions for Kyle?
Thank you, Kyle. Agenda item seven is a resolution authorizing execution of necessary documents to apply for and accept if awarded to Golden Leaf Foundation grant funds, and I'll turn it over to Kyle Hane to review.
Just to provide a quick synopsis, some brief history on this project, Tanglewood Business Park is a county-owned parcel in southwest Forsyth County, right outside the municipal boundaries of the Village of Clemmons. The county, back in 2015, identified this as a economic development site and asked staff to move forward with preparing it for development. To date, we have done much of the due diligence, as well as constructed a sewer lift station that could serve the site and a stub road to the site. Right now, currently, there's RFQ out through the Utilities Commission that would extend the sewer outfall to the perimeter of the site to provide sewer to the site. And so this item is looking to the next stage of development, which would be to clear and grade a, a specific site and make it more attractive to business. The Golden Leaf Foundation has a program called the Site Program that will probably provide up to $1.5 million for the design and engineering and construction portion of clearing and grading a site. And so that would be the intent, was to develop one site on Tanglewood Business Park with those funds if awarded.
Questions for Kyle? I have one. Which, which, how, which site, I mean, there are probably, there are several potential sites on that. Would it be the one closest to the lift station, or a site very close to that?
So I think part of the design and engineering would be to really kind of determine if we're only going to build one site, what is the most effective place to, to build that? In the master planning early on, we had two different concepts that were developed. I know that right now, currently, a portion of the site is owned general industrial, a portion is residential. And so I think what we would try to do is focus on a site that's already zoned general industrial, which would be on the northern portion of the site, and focus on what, what the best, most attractive site that could be cleared for a million and a half dollars is.
Yeah, I was just trying to think of the location of that. The north side's further away, as it's further away, not only is it longer, but it, it, would it be, is there a chance it gets in the way of what may be another site or two that would be developed sort of as it goes down that, that hill? I mean, obviously, I think the location's important. I guess that, I guess that's handled simply by depth and, and by lines to run into it. I guess you're trying to have the, the hook in to the main trunk line drain, a gravity drain, to be not so far away from where another building's at. I mean, almost, it almost requires looking at potential, uh, multiple building sites to sort of look at the best location for that.
I think that's accurate, yeah. So, you know, we've done some of the due diligence, but haven't done the full engineering on the property. So in engaging an engineer for design work, I think we would probably ask for their expertise around the best location, based off of the, the work that's already been done, to effectively use that money, but also for the, leaving the ability to develop the rest of the site for maximum, maximum sites of economic development sites on the property.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, if you, if you remember the.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question.
Go ahead, go ahead. Commissioner Bessie is, is online. Go ahead, Commissioner Bessie.
Yes. Thank you very much. Kyle, I just wanted to confirm that the, the Village of Clemmons got a current notification that we were considering this, in case they had any input on location.
I, I have made them aware that we were moving forward with the sewer. I've not made them aware necessarily of the, of applying for Golden Leaf, but happy to do that. Happy to, happy to go ahead and email them and let them know.
That'll be great. Thank you so much.
Yeah, the only comment I was just going to add is if you remember, you know, the, the topography of that, really, yeah, and, and the lift station is at the bottom of it, and so you, there's obviously a couple of sites that are ideal and were ready to be, that sort of meet the criteria for, for quick development, or more, more rapid development than other ones, but, um, yeah.
All righty.
Yeah, and I understand the engineering considerations, it's a current notification. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Kyle. All right. The next items, actually, item eight through item 15 on this agenda all relate to ARPA funding. And so I'm going to ask Ayesha Carter to come up and, and review these with you, and I'm, I'm not going to, I'm not going to read every one of them. So I'm going to let you just step through them if you, if you will, Ayesha, please.
Okay. Good afternoon, County Commissioners, Ayesha, and I do have eight items, so I will try to be brief. I do want to recognize representatives from all of the nonprofits that I will be speaking on today. If y'all could show, or raise your hand to where you are, the room is filled with them. I know they are thankful for your consideration. So I'll start with the IDA program. So this is a, oh, sorry. So this is a resolution to extend the agreement with the IDA program. That program actually started later than anticipated, and they would like to extend for unforeseen challenges. Again, it started later than anticipated, and they will extend through December 31st, 2026. Questions in regards to that? All right. The next one I have is the Center for Exceptional Children. The extension is, request is due December 31st, 2025, and it is for unforeseen challenges, personnel changes, and data collection changes. The major thing here is a bathroom renovation in classrooms. They deal with high-knee kids, and they want to do it when the kids are not in school. So, is that one, any questions there? Next one is Work Family Resource Center. They asking for an extension due December 31st, 2025, and theirs is for external factors. Big thing there is the economic conditions that individuals looking to have licensed family childcare centers. A lot of them have to have, like, fences and have their houses inspected before they can actually have a, a solid childcare center in their home. So they're asking for an extension to make sure that all of those individuals have enough time to get all those things wrapped up, their eyes dotted and their t's crossed. Any questions there? Next one is the Arts Council of Winston-Salem in Forsyth County. They ask for an extension due to a complex project and personnel changes. The extension date is due September 30th, 2025, which will match with their fiscal year end. And again, that's a very complex project with a lot of moving pieces, and their ED did chase law, recently announced resignation, so her last day was February 16th. Next I have Forsyth Tech Nursing Workforce Development. Their extension request is through May 31st, 2025, and it is for unforeseen challenges and personnel changes. This extension will allow for three additional cohorts of nursing students. The total number of students would be 180 if they could have this extension. Any questions there? All right. The next one is Smart Start of Forsyth County. The extension reason is for unforeseen challenges in evaluation and learning. They're asking for an extension date of December 31st, 2025. So this project actually started later than anticipated, and their budget is, was a two-year budget, and given this extension, they will be able to collect two years of data and, and evaluate. The next one is Children's Home Society of North Carolina. They're asking for an extension due December 30th, 2025, and it is for unforeseen challenges. This one is just hiring staff of, the extension will allow them to hire three of their two-person teams for their, their Child First program. Any questions there? And then the last one is ARCA. They are requesting the extension date of December 31st, 2025, for unforeseen challenges and external factors. They, they had a bunch of construction delays related to COVID, and then supply chain delays, as well as needing approval from the NCDHSR. Any questions there?
Any questions for Ayesha on any of these?
Oh, go ahead. I don't have any questions, but the only, it's not really a concern. What I, I would like to see, I'm not sure about the others, would like to see a quarterly update, just so that if any of the entities are still struggling in some areas, how we could support them. Yep. Thank you.
One second. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Gloria. We'll get to you next, Commissioner Bessie.
I have the same concern. Are you comfortable that these projects can be completed? And I, I keep hearing unforeseen challenges. Do you think they'll be able to solve those problems?
At this point, I do, and just, I agree with your concern. So a quarterly update would be something that I do plan on doing, especially with these.
Commissioner Bessie, question?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I thought I recalled a conversation with Gordon regarding the federal deadlines and kind of a blanket recommendation for these, that it would be safer to extend things simply through December 2024, with the anticipation that we could, money that wasn't spent by then would be counted against revenue loss, and, and we could simply elect, in most of all cases, to, to extend the same amounts to these grantee agencies under, you know, front fund balance. Because that, you know, my understanding was that we were, we were not assured under the federal guidelines that we would be able to shift the funding during, you know, after the conclusion of the calendar year 2024, in case that projects did continue to have difficulty completing the expenditure.
Would either of you like to comment? I mean, I, I, I sort of think this is kind of replacing that issue, but.
Well, I, I think that specific issue is about how we characterize revenue loss as we get towards the end of 2024. I, I believe for these particular projects, what Ayesha and staff have done is they've looked at what would the most efficient use of the money be? And, and for, I, I don't think there's as much a concern with these entities as to whether they'll spend the money. It's just that if they had to spend it by the end of this calendar year, they may have to rush the projects, and particularly with the Smart Start Early Childhood, they really had anticipated a model that gave them two full years, and because of the complications of treasury interpretations and things like that, they couldn't get started until it left them less than two years until the end of 2024. So I, I think to, to comment more directly on, on what you just said, Commissioner Bessie, at the end of this calendar year, we will need to take a hard look at what we think will be able to be spent, and we may, at that point, re-characterize some of these, but what the board would be doing at its meeting would just be allow these particular entities to have extra time to, to use their funding.
Yeah. Mr. Bessie, I was, I really think there's sort of two different questions. One is contractually what your expectations are about around when the funds will be spent, but in any event, you, I think you are correct, that this fall, the board will need to, to, to look at the ARPA program and then utilize revenue losses as a strategy i- it, as well. And so I think it's, I think they're two, two different things.
Thank you. So we would not be precluded by the amendments approved next week from recapturing funds that we anticipated were not, in fact, going to be spent on a tally basis.
You want to respond to that, Gordon?
That, that's correct. That's correct. We, we, we could revisit this. As, as the manager stated, we're, we're just allowing extra time to these entities to, to perform their services.
Thank you. I just wanted to confirm that.
And just a last comment I'll make. I'd like to thank all of you that are here from these agencies, particularly for applying for the ARPA funds. I mean, that was really important, that, that we're able to use the dollars to make a difference here in this community, and, and all of you stepped up and applied. So I want to thank you for that. And I do, it is important to, to mention that we're not adding money. There's not more money available. That needs to always be said, but the flexibility is something that our congressional delegation has been aware of, has been across the, our National Association has been aware of, of county, National Association of Counties, and, and the ability to do this is, is worked out so we can handle it. And I, and I think the. Everyone knew that the timelines were short, um, from the very first day, that it was going to be very difficult to do this. And so I think this is making wiser use of the dollars and a better investment, and I think we'll all have better results. And again, thank you for applying to begin with.
Thank you.
Anything else to say? We're good. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Ayesha. Great, great work. All right. Uh, item 16 is a contract contractual matter. Uh, it is a resolution authorizing execution of agreement between Forsyth County and SCIAPS Incorporated for the purchase of some type of piece of equipment that Nicole Pretty is going to talk to you about with public health.
I was hoping you'd say the whole name, so I don't have to say.
Nope, not going to do it.
Uh, good afternoon, Commissioners. Uh, the environmental health program at the Department of Public Health is seeking approval for a single source purchase of a lead paint analyzer used, uh, which will be used to assist in the investigation of lead hazards in children. The SCIAPS X550 PB Lead Paint Analyzer does not use radioactive isotopes and therefore makes operating, calibrating, and maintaining the machine safer and more efficient. Um, the cost of this analyzer is $30,425 and the funds for this purchase will be coming from ARPA monies the county has received from the Department of Health and Human Services to address lead in water and lead-based paint in public schools and childcare facilities.
And I assume there's clearly no other vendor, uh, in terms of, because I think I read that, this sole source vendor.
Yes.
Okay. Any questions, any questions for Nicole? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nicole. Agenda item 17 is a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement between Forsyth County and Support Systems of Forsyth County Transportation LLC to provide mi- a micro transit service to county residents for employment-related transportation. Andrea.
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, good afternoon, I apologize. Um, so for some background, the county has been receiving about $90,000 a year in funds from the North Carolina Department of Transportation, um, with the intent to provide, um, supplement, transportation services that are supplemental to our existing public transportation infrastructure, um, that provide low-income residents services to employment-related activities. Um, and that's kind of the, employment-related activities is really the general term that they use. That means everything from work to training to an interview, um, transporting children to childcare so that parents can get to work. Um, there's a whole matrix that I'll spare you. Um, and so as we started to navigate how we want to use this funding and how it could, um, help our community, uh, that many of the priorities that we decided on were connecting low-income residents with jobs and training, connecting rural areas to employment centers, and filling in gaps from our current public transportation system. For example, a lot of the businesses out in Union Cross area, kind of by Kernersville, there's not a bus stop there. And so really those jobs that our economic development team is bringing in, how do we really remove those barriers there? Um, and so a micro transit service provides rides, um, across the county and the neighboring communities depending on, um, location and distance and all that stuff. Um, but one area that we are, um, drilling into is that riders must be county residents just because this funding is meant to support our community members and we want to help our residents get those opportunities. Um, so that's some background into how, um, the program would work. Um, Support Systems of Forsyth County is a micro transit provider, um, that's been in business almost five years. Um, the company actually went through our swap with this IDA program that our department runs. Um, they have partnerships with the community courts, um, and the Greater Student Aspire Program. And in 2022, they, um, did 3,800 employment-related rides. So they're already very well-connected. We trust that they can handle, um, the volume. And so how it would work is riders would fill out a intake form that would be on our website, share with community partners, um, other county departments, employers, um, really anyone who would know somebody who needs transportation. Um, and there we would find out, um, where they live, where they need to go, why they need to go there, if it's work, training, that sort of thing. Um, and then from there, they would be in contact with the provider to coordinate the day-to-day operation. Um, we would get reports about monthly, just on all the rides, where they're going, which will provide us a great, um, kind of monitoring and insight into where people live, where they're working, and a captive audience for other workforce development programming. Um, transportation is a fairly big barrier, especially in the county I was out. Um, I was doing a business up in Germantown a couple of weeks ago, um, and their HR director told me a story of how a woman had to Uber to her job interview and then connect to wifi to call her Uber back. Um, and told her, just you wait, something's coming. Um, so we're really excited about what this could do.
Any questions for Andrea?
Happy to answer.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Items 18 and 19 are both, uh, vehicle equipment purchases. Kirby Robinson is going to come up and talk to this issue.
Well, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Board. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to bring these items before you today. I thought before I got into the specific purchases, I'd give you a little bit of a overlook of where we are with vehicle purchasing and kind of where we're headed. Uh, as you know, General Services manages the county's vehicle replacement funds. Uh, the board sets aside funds for the purchase of new vehicles. Those go into three accounts, emergency services, sheriff's office, and the non-emergency. Uh, and then the plan each year is to replace frontline vehicles. So that's when, that's what feeds into the budget and our replacement plan, and that's what we focus on during the year. Uh, the past couple of years really do largely to supply chain issues. I feel like we've incrementally brought vehicle purchases to you as well as contracts for, you know, upfit supplies, um, and the services that go into that. So moving forward, some of that's freeing up a little bit. I think our goal in fiscal '25 is to really aggressively pursue, um, you know, implementing the plan that feeds through the budget that the board adopts and really getting those in front of you in the first quarter. Uh, and that'll give us a good global look on what the replacement plan for fiscal '25 looks like for those three accounts. So just wanted to touch on that, um, at the beginning, and then I'm going to try and use this little guy right here. Uh, that's the... Oh, there it goes. Sorry. Okay. So I thought I would make a little table just for each vehicle to step through. Uh, the thought process there is to tell you what we have now that needs to be replaced, what we're proposing to replace it with, and then the breakdown of the pricing and how we got there. So, uh, the first question we ask ourselves is this is, is this a frontline vehicle? There are two vehicles in the first item, uh, and the answer is yes. They are in the fiscal '24 replacement plan. They are Ford F-150s. They are older, higher mileage vehicles that you can see there used by the Fire Division of Emergency Services. Uh, they run on, in the fire investigations, building inspections, and they do run some calls for service as needed. Uh, we're proposing to replace both full-size trucks with two full-size trucks that are just a little bit bigger. Uh, and we're proposing Chevys, uh, Chevy Silverados, 2500s. Um, the reason, there are two reasons there. One, we need a little bit of a bigger truck because the F-150 is not rated to tow the large trailers emergency services has. Uh, and we're switching, um, to Chevy there because Ford actually costs a little bit more in this respect and Chevy has a better warranty. And that's something our fleet manager's really took, taken some time to look into and feels like they just have a better warranty. The base price per vehicle, and that's based on the Sheriff Association pricing, is $50,195. Got some options there. And so the total price for both vehicles is $107,664. If you compare the base price of that vehicle to the state contract price for the same vehicle and to the private sector, the Sheriff Association is less. And I'm happy to answer any questions on these trucks that you may have.
Are these diesel or gas engines?
I think these are gas engines. Gas.
Well, uh, it, the, a question, uh, I think you've had some, I don't know whether we have, but some people have some difficulty with the diesel engines on the Ford trucks. This and Chevrolet.
Yes, sir.
Well, some of the, uh, Amelances has got the Chevrolet chassis, got some kind of diesel in it, and they've performed good, haven't they?
I, Steve, uh, you know, is our fleet manager, really can speak specifically to that. I mean, the vast majority of our ambulance fleet is gas. Uh, so he can speak to the difference in gas and diesel vehicles.
Yeah. And I will say that, um, you know, the designation of a frontline vehicle means that those two trucks we take offline likely will still be used in the fleet, but they're going to be used in a backup capacity in, in like a parts arrangement or some other use that would not be a frontline use. Um, you know, the idea that you wouldn't want to go buy a brand-new vehicle for some specific kinds of uses, so.
Well, I just, the Chevrolet, uh, uh, Amelances, uh, they got a number to the truck and I don't remember what they are, but my understanding about those, that they performed, the engines, uh, performed good since we've had them.
Switch microphones here. Um, yeah, we got, I don't have the numbers with me right now, but we've got more gas engine Amelances, even Chevrolet, and they're putting about the same amount of miles as the diesel's been having. We've had pretty good luck out of that Chevrolet gas motor. But the other ones are also lasting pretty, pretty well. Around, uh, one of them has got 190,000. It's got the gas engine, the same engine as, uh, we put in these trucks here. But the, the E-Type 3's Amelances that we use now, you, you cannot get a diesel engine in them anymore since 2017. The ones we have now have been running since 2012. But they, uh, they, Chevrolet's got a good, a lot better gas engine than some of the competitors. And like I say, we, we got one, I think it's got 200,000 miles on it and it's got that same 6, 6, 6-liter engine in it.
Okay.
And, uh, other, other problem, or I'm, I'm seeing is, is the gas engine, this truck here would probably be another $10,000 for the diesel engine option. So, does that help you any?
Okay, I was just, well, I may have been confused about the, some of the Amel-, uh, Chevrolet Amelance chassis being diesel, that was a gas engines, but I know that, uh, they'd performed pretty well. I've just heard some over time say that they liked them better than they did, um, Ford's.
Commissioner Limbaugh, I was, I was like, likewise confused in that, um, uh, you know, I remember, and time flies, but I remember when we moved away from the diesel ambulances, buying gas ambulances really because of concerns about the, the, the diesel, the DEF and, and impact of that on operation and, and just the maintenance piece of it. Uh, we did that. Everybody else moved away from them as well. Um, and so we really have very few diesels still left in the, in the fleet. And, you know, we find ourselves at a place, you know, recognizing that our, the, the amount of time that we've, that you can keep a gas engine in service versus a diesel engine in service is, is just less. A diesel, the old diesels, you, they'd rather be running than not running. And, and, um, you know, that's not true with a gas engine. It's just, it's, it's a different, it's a different situation. I think the, the gas engines we got are good, but because those vehicles run idle so much because they're on a scene and what have you, um, the engine hours they have on them, when you compare them against the vehicle miles, or it's, they've got a ton of engine hours on them, so.
Yeah, it's, last time I checked, uh, we had a unit that had 150,000 miles. When I added the 8,000-plus hours idle time, it put it up to about a half million miles. And, uh, most of the diesels that we have left in the fleet, we're having all kinds of issues with the DEF, DEF system and EGR systems on them, which I wish we could buy a whole fleet of the Gen 1 diesel engines and they were pretty much bulletproof. But, but right now they're, they don't run as long as the gas engines right now.
Yeah. So we'll be bringing in this next cycle to you, really a relook at our vehicle replacement plan that's going to flatten out those expenditures over like a 10-year period. It does require kind of a one-time injection of funds in it to get some ambulances, um, but, uh, it will flatten that out over, over a period of time. And, uh, staff's done a good job with that. I just gotta, I wanted to have that conversation, um, and, and get that plan in place so that, um, so that we can present you not only the funding plan over a 10-year period, but also the, you know, the, the.
Well, I hate to remind anybody of it, but those, uh, strict, uh, remissions, emissions, that high tier for those, most all vehicles, but for, particular for diesels. When they first came out, the big trucks, tractor trailer trucks, they got all that stuff too. It's caused just much as problem. They, I heard somebody's in truck and say that they had some brand-new trucks run west coast and they couldn't get all the way there till the things had cut off. Those, I guess they could get them back to going, but those emissions would shut them down if something got out of whack. So that's, that's kind of going backwards a little bit, but maybe they'll get all of the problem fixed.
Yeah, that's some issues we had. Once, uh, once a DEF system starts acting up, it puts in reduced power. So it causes a whole lot of headache, but, um, like I say, the gas engines we got now, even in Amelances with a higher mileage, are holding up fairly well.
Well, just, Stephen, just do the best of what you got to work with. I know you're doing a good job.
Thanks, sir.
I saw one of you retired cohorts the other day.
I know who you're talking about.
One at Old Richmond.
Allen.
All right, thanks.
Two of them, two of them.
Yeah.
Uh, first also.
All right. Uh, Commissioners, moving on to the, uh, second item there, I bumped something, I'm sorry. That's not messing up the screen. Um, there are two items in this one, and I'll start with the Chevy Colorado's. So kind of following the same format there. Again, the first question we're asking ourselves is, is it, are these vehicles in the replacement plan or the frontline? The answer is yes. Right now we have two Ford Rangers. Uh, they're both 16 years old and they have high mileage on them. They're used by Environmental Health, which is of course part of public health for on-site water and wastewater purposes. Uh, the vehicles we're proposing are Chevy Colorado's, so it's a very similar type of truck. Um, obviously two of them there. The base price I have listed, uh, per vehicle on the table is a little bit different than what you'll see if you look at the actual quote in your packet. Uh, I don't, that quote's not exactly set up the way it should be, really. I mean, because that's a 2022 price you're seeing there. And so they have the model upgrade listed as an option. It's not an option. It's what the 2024, uh, model costs. That, that's a little bit of the difference there. Uh, total, uh, amount for both trucks with the options, $67,266. If you compare that base price of $33,195 to state contract in the private sector, uh, the Sheriff Association pricing is the lowest. And the last item, vehicle-wise, here we go, uh, are the replacement, uh, of a Chevy Impala and a Dodge Caravan. They are frontline vehicles. They're used in child protective services at DSS and their motor pool. Uh, they drive employees, clients, and children around. And you can see those, uh, one of them is very old, uh, but both of them are older and have higher mileage. We're, we're proposing to replace that, uh, with a Chevy Equinox. And so really coming right in the middle of it, you know, a little bit bigger than a sedan because that's something that they need when they're putting stuff, uh, in them, they've said, and not quite as big as a minivan. Uh, so they really like kind of the Equinox model. This is a case where the Sheriff Association pricing for the base vehicle cost, number one, is actually a little bit higher than state contract. Uh, the reason we're not pursuing the state contract is, is they're out of town. And so by the time you get the vehicle here, it's a little bit of a wash for the $500 difference. And then from the private sector, it's actually pretty close. Um, and if you drive around the dealerships, you might see a sticker price that'll say less than $26,000. That's a little bit of a misleading thing because we're not eligible for some of those discounts they may give the private sector. Um, so anyway, I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, the board has on that item.
Any questions for Kirby? All right. We're good.
Kirby, why don't you jump over to your last item?
Yes, sir. Uh, Commissioners, the, uh, North Carolina Department of Transportation is planning to install a traffic circle at the intersection of Shallowford Road and Lewisville Clemmons Road. Um, so obviously the Lewisville Library is right near that, uh, location, and they are asking for a permanent utility easement to run across .001 acres, very small. Um, and so when they said, they came to us, uh, and they said, you know, most local governments donate that, we'd appreciate it. And I said, I'm going to make Commissioner Limbaugh happy and proud of me, and we negotiated. And we got a $300 offer out of it. So I'm proud to bring that to you. Um, I don't know if they were actually end up doing anything with it. If you look at the Lewisville Library property, if you're looking at it from Shallowford, this is the corner on the left. It's got a little water box out there now. I doubt it's going to affect our property a whole lot, uh, but I'm happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Well, if you come out on top negotiating with the state, you did good.
Thank you, sir. And I, I. And I, I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Kirby. All right. Last two items are just reports. You've got the January 2024 Contributions-Based Benefit Cap Report and the Second Quarter Human Resources Report. So that is it. After a long day.
Been a long day. Yeah. Thank you, everyone, for all their preparation and work. I mean, it's been a lot of information, kind of information overload.
Mr. Manager?
Yep.
I'm going to call up to Washington and see what the slowdown is on these electric vehicles and tell them you're planning on retiring June 30th, and you'd like to see at least one or two in operation.
I think the best I can do is buy a lawnmower between now and June 30th, so that we'll see what happens, but thank you.
All right.
All right.
And just, just reminder, no, no meeting next Thursday.
Yep.